Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to City Council of Chambers. I'm Councilman Ed Rice Singer, the Chairman of the Land Use Committee. The one grand law that I have is please either turn off your cell phones or put it on vibrate to give courtesy and respect to those who want to testify. Before we have the hearing, I want to make some introductions. To my far left is Councilman Leon Pinkett. To his right is Councilman Ryan Dorsey. His right is Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and I apologize to Councilman Dorsey's left is Councilman John Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I didn't see him through Councilman Henry's head, but...
I know.
Second to Dorsey's right is Councilman Bill Henry. Second to my right is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my immediate left is Council Vice President, I mean Council, she is the Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee, Councilwoman Shannon Snead. To my far right is Councilman Robert Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Eric Casello. We are also joined by Rebecca Simmons. She's not here? Okay. Kayleen Young from the President's Office, along with Malik Johns, who's new. Welcome. We also have Matt Stageman and Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office. And to my immediate right is Staffperson Jennifer Coates. We're here for City Council Bill 19-0416. This is the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2005 West Baltimore Street, which is Block 0206, Lot 043, as outlined in red on the accompanying plot, and granting variances from certain bulk and off-street parking regulations. I just want to state that the public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, this conversion bill was introduced by Councilman Bullock. Councilman, do you have, say a few words on your bill?
So again, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I stand before you quite often with some of these bills, but as you know, we have a significant glut of vacant and abandoned housing, and so every anytime there's someone who wants to then provide some affordable housing in the area, we definitely support it. Again, we know that Fayette Street Outreach Neighborhood was informed about it, and there has been no negative response in the community, so it's something I support, and hopefully you do too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I just want to give you kudos and respect because I see what you're doing in regards to have more affordable housing in your district with those vacant houses. So, thanks. We'll start with the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department. At its regular meeting on September 12th of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill 190416. The Planning Commission heard testimony and reviewed a staff report concerning this particular property and is recommending approval of this bill with amendment. The bill contains variances for lot area and for parking. However, this particular building has a short third floor compared to the other two floors below it, and therefore, in order to satisfy the zoning code provision 9-703(c) for conversion, there is insufficient floor area for the third dwelling unit without provision of a variance. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending amendment of the bill to add a variance. This is a technical requirement in order to meet the standards contained in the zoning code. The Planning Commission found that this action would meet all the requirements of the zoning code, and specifically, the establishment, location, construction, maintenance, or operation of this conditional use would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare. The use is not precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan. The authorization would not be contrary to the public interest, and the authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the code. The staff recommended and the Planning Commission also found that the proposed use as a three-family dwelling would be consistent with other residential use in the area, that while there is only one off-street parking space meeting zoning code standards that could be provided on this property due to, basically, the historic way it was developed, this site is in a dense, walkable neighborhood that is served by public transportation, and there is a practical difficulty with complying with the bulk standards in the zoning code that is not being caused by the action or inaction of any person with a present interest in this property. Conditions on which the bill are based are unique to the property and not generally applicable to other property within the same zoning classification, while the practical difficulty is not being created by an intentional action or inaction of a person with a present interest in the property. The purpose of the variances requested, including those in the bill already, is not based exclusively on a desire to increase the value or income potential of the property. Each of the variances that would be granted, including the recommended additional variance, would not be injurious to use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, nor substantially diminish or impair property values in the neighborhood. The variances would be in harmony with a comprehensive master plan and related considerations of public health, safety, and general welfare. And I would note for the record that Fayette Street Outreach spoke in support of this bill also. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the committee?
So, yeah, I just...
Yeah, go ahead. You've got us here.
So, basically, we have a variance for the third floor and a variance for the parking. Is that what we've got here?
The variance is already, the parking variance is already in the bill as it was filed. What was missing was a variance for the floor area for the third apartment.
Okay.
Because the third floor is a short floor. It's not a full-built-out floor like the other two.
I'm sorry, what, why wasn't, what was the deal with the parking?
Well, the property can provide one off-street parking space. It cannot provide an additional space beyond that. That would be required.
I see. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. BMZA?
Lee Unadu for the BMZA. BMZA stands by its report with no objection to the bill.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its report, no objection.
Law Department?
Law Department stands by its report, Mr. Chair.
DHCD stands by our report in support and in support of planning's amendment.
BDC?
BDC stands by its report of no objection.
Park and Authority?
Park and Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. The Fire Department couldn't be here, but they have no objection. We will now go on to...
Who? He's saying his...
I was just prepared to speak for the Fire Department.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, that's it. No objection.
All right. I don't want to leapfrog. I just, uh, public testimony, we don't have any. So, at this time, where's the... Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Snead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pinkett, second.
Okay. All those who favor, supporting the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts is passed. There's amendments on this bill. Do I have a motion to move the amendments?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Snead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Pinkett?
Pinkett.
All those who favor the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The amendment's passed. Now, I need a motion to move the bill favorable as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Snead. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett.
We don't think we're there today.
Now, time to vote as amended. Rice Singer votes yes. Shannon Snead?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Casello?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Middleton is out six. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes, and Councilman Stokes is yes. We have, we have seven yes with one absent. The bill passes as amended, and will come out on December the 2nd. This concludes City Council Bill 19-0416. We are now ready to hear Bill 19-0421. This is a rezoning. This is a rezoning, rear portions of 6240 and 6242, Balona Avenue, for the purpose of changes zoning for the, for rear portions of properties known as 6240 and 6242, Balona Avenue, Block 4976, Lots 11 and 11A, as outlined in the red on the accompanying plot, from a C1VC zoning district to the R1E zoning district. All the public notice requirements have been met, and at this time, Councilman Henry is the sponsor of this district. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I want to thank my colleagues for considering this piece of legislation. This is correcting an issue from Transform in which I don't think, I am comfortable saying, no one intended to have happen what happened, but because the property owners were doing one piece of manipulation to the properties, and the city was doing its own manipulation in changing the zoning, as a result, when during Transform, the city attempted to change the zoning just for the parcel which is improved by the liquor store and the pharmacy, we tried to just, we intended to just zone that parcel commercial, but because the property owners were in the middle of doing their own consolidation and subdivision for an adjacent parcel, the city inadvertently rezoned the entire area commercial, and now we are putting the portions of what are now two different lots back to residential as everyone had intended them to be in the first place.
Right. So, so it was, they did both at C1VC, and you want to take the rear and rezone that to R1E, which was your intent from the beginning?
Correct.
Or there was a error somewhere?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Planning Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as the good council member did say, that the two parcels were actually caught up in the process of a subdivision. The actual property at 6242, it is one building, but there are two different uses. It's a liquor store and a pharmacy. And at that time, in 2015, the rear portion of the property was subdivided, and as the rear portion was subdivided, the C1VC zoning actually carried over to 6240, and it actually should not have, so would have actually made the backyard of the residential a C1VC. So what this is doing is it is splitting the property so that the residential property will continue to have, will actually end up having its residential zoning.
Okay. And there's no amendments to this?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions to Planning? BMZA?
The BMZA, an appeal was actually filed in this case after this bill was introduced, so the BMZA has no comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its report as no objection.
Law Department?
Law Department can approve the bill formally if sufficient, provided appropriate procedural rules are followed and appropriate findings are made.
DHCD stands by our report, no objection.
BDC?
Mr. Chair, BDC stands by its report. BDC finds no objection to the passage of the bill.
Okay. Park and Authority?
Park and Authority does not oppose the passage of the bill.
Okay. Public testimony, we start with, I apologize if I messed this up, Robby Rawl. Did I pronounce that correct?
Robbie.
Oh, Robert?
Close. Yes, hi. I'm Robbie Rawl.
Is Paul Berg's mic down here?
Is that better? You got it. All right. I'm Robbie Rawl. I live at 192 Hollin Road, which is adjacent to the two properties in question. I know submitted as part of the written testimony is a certain amount of evidence given by the Balona Giddings Community Association, of which I'm a board member, and my neighbor, Louisa Murphy, is going to speak to the evidence as well. So I'm just going to speak as, you know, a neighbor who lives right there, and who's very concerned about her backyard suddenly becoming C1VC. As Councilman Henry, you know, mentioned very clearly, we've been told from the start that it was only the portion of 6242, the front portion, that contains businesses that was meant to be changed to C1VC, and that the parking lot of C, 6242, the rear portion, and the rear portion of 6240 were meant to be, to remain residential. My property backs up to there. You know, my husband and I, when we moved to Baltimore, I mean, actually, this is his long-term hometown and my adopted hometown, we found our dream house, and we purposely looked to live in the city, not the county. Here we are, 10 years and three children later, and we hope to be there many, many more decades. But my neighborhood is residential, you know, and I hope that it stays that way. So I appeal to you all. Here I am, two years after this was discovered, asking you to fix this mistake and put this to rest. It's just been going on too long. So please return the back portion of 6242 and the back portion of 6240 to their rightful residential designation. It's a quiet residential neighborhood, and, you know, we've long made space for a small, quiet, complementary business with its current unassuming footprint, but this is not the neighborhood for a larger commercial center. So, that's it. I urge you to pass this without amendment.
Any comments?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down. Louisa Murphy, is that Louise?
Louisa.
Louisa?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you all for hearing our case. It's very important to us. It may seem like a tempest in a teapot, but to, I assure you, to the Balona Giddings community, to the community association, and especially to nearby neighbors, it is really important that this bill be passed without amendment. In your packet, you'll see a bunch of documents that sort of show the, you know, the path of making sure this property was split-zoned with the rear R1E. You've probably seen them. They're planning staff recommendations, and I think a bill that shows that the City Council actually, or this committee, voted on this very amendment and approved it way back in 2016. So it was definitely a mistake, as Bill Henry said, that the rear portion was zoned commercially. You also have a bunch of letters from neighbors making the case that they do, in fact, they did originally and still do, want that parking lot to be zoned residentially, making very compelling case for that, especially nearby neighbors. So, you know, in summary, it was definitely a mistake. We have confirmation from everybody and their mother that it was a mistake, and it's taken a long time to fix this mistake. The neighbors want it corrected, and hopefully that will be the case today without amendments. That's it.
That's it.
Any questions, comments? No? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming down. Nancy Maronic?
Good afternoon, councilmen and ladies. I am Nancy Maronic and I was president of the Balona Giddings Community Association during the city's rewrite of the zoning. And I made special efforts to make sure that all the residential property in our community remained residential during that rewrite. I was quite amazed to find that it was not that way. Quite by mistake, I found that, after the legislation had been passed. We have York Road, which is a commercial corridor on our east border, and the Wine Shop and Charles Meat Pharmacy are the two commercial ventures in our community. But we have made all efforts for many years to keep our, our community residential and to be protective of any domino effect of the commercial ventures that are near us. So, Councilman Henry has laid out that this was a mistake and I sent in some evidence to that effect as well with the recommendations of the Planning Commission that were, that I had from when I was president and also the MOU agreement that we made with the Wine Shop. Anyway, I, this was a mistake. I hope it will be, that you will pass the legislation and that it'll go back to being residential.
Any questions, comments? No? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
That's why. Barbara Hansen?
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Hansen and I'm a lifelong resident of Pinehurst at Boxwood Road. My driveway is immediately opposite the entry to the parking lot on Giddings Avenue. And it would be very, very difficult for me if, and for others, if this corner was allowed to become more commercial than it already is. I should tell you a little bit about the area. Again, as a lifelong member of the community, it's been quiet. It's also been highly taxed because of the quiet residential neighborhood. So I sincerely hope that you will pass this without any amendments or any change. And we will be so grateful if you can do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming down. Any, any questions, comments? Okay. On this, we need a motion to move the finding of facts.
So move.
Moved by Clark or who second?
Costello.
Costello? All those who favor the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, finding of facts passes. We have, there's no amendments to this bill. So I need a motion to move the bill?
So move.
Second.
Hey, Dorsey? Moved.
Clark.
And Clark second. Now to take a vote with no amendments. Right stake of votes, yes, Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Costello?
Yes.
Costello is yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey, yes. Middleton's absent. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett, yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. We have seven yes with one absent. The bill passed, it will come out, City Council Bill 19-0421 will come out on second read of December the 2nd. This concludes Bill 19-0421. Thank you. Okay, we're here for City Council Bill 19-0367 for the purpose of changing the zoning for the... About this? Okay, now, all right. The purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 129 and 131 South Schroeder Street, which is Block 0252, Lots 052 and 051, as outlined in red on the accompanying plot, from the R1 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. Let me state that all the public notice requirements have been met and I recognize Councilman Bollock. Do you have, say a few words on the rezoning?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm before you, but for a slightly different matter. Here we have a bit of a casualty from, from Transform. Essentially, we have a, a building that has been operating in a commercial fashion for decades and is looking to expand to the building next door. This is a property and a neighborhood establishment that has gotten a lot of support and patronage in the area. It is actually within the Hollins Market area, which is more, even though there is residential property there, it's also part of the more commercial area. You will see there's also support from the Southwest Partnership, who's also here in terms of the collaboration between the neighborhoods within this portion of the city. So I would love for you to give it a, a good hearing again. This is something that I support, something the neighborhood supports, and it would also help to invigorate the neighborhood as it relates to having more commercial establishments or at least expanding some of the opportunities in some underserved neighborhoods that are on the cusp of thriving. So I appreciate the opportunity today and I know the applicant is here as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. We will go to the planning staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. This bill was presented to the Planning Commission in their public meeting of May 9th. Upon reviewing a staff recommendation of disapproval, the Planning Commission heard from a number of interested area residents and organizations with a wide variety of support and received a number of letters to that effect. Following their vote, the Planning Commission did not agree with staff's findings and instead is recommending amendment and approval of this bill with two amendments. First, that the property 934 West Pratt Street be added to the bill and that the properties are instead to be rezoned to the C1 district instead of C2 as drafted. We understand that the applicants agree to that alternate zoning category.
Okay, all right. Just, I just recognize this. So the planning staff gave an unfair report, the Planning Commission supports it, but we need a finding of facts, so who's, who's doing that? My right? We need a finding of fact? Huh?
You are correct.
Okay, is the owner here? Yeah, come on. He could give... I just want to make sure we're doing this legally. He could do the finding of facts.
Their testimony, if it's adequate, can be used for the finding of facts, yes.
Okay.
They have to satisfy the, the parameters in the, in the bill reports regarding the evidence to support.
Yeah, okay, so you got to give us the testimony so we can use for the finding of facts, okay? Yeah. What, what you need to do is, thank you, is just talk about the history of the property and, and the purpose. Go ahead. Take your time, we'll go.
Good afternoon, thank you for seeing us...
Yeah, put the microphone up.
Thank you for seeing us this afternoon. Michael Kavanaugh, co-owner of The Backyard Restaurant and Bar. We are in a building that has been operated as a bar since 1862. Their claim to fame was that they were the oldest Irish bar in the country, continually run by the same family. And so we bought the property in 2018 and we have continued to run since September 28th of last year. And what we are attempting to do is be more family-friendly, more friendly to the elderly and physically disabled, as well as provide a space for community events, organizations to meet. And we need to expand to be able to do that. Right now, we are only allowed to operate on the first floor of the building. It is a classic Baltimore row home. It's about 14 and a half feet wide. So right now, all we have is about 20 seats. They are all high seats. So, for instance, my, my mom, who is 71 and has rheumatoid arthritis, is very uncomfortable for her. So what we plan to do is expand into the building next door to have a dining room so that we can have some, some lower seats. We can be more kid-friendly. We are right across the street from BNO Museum, who sees hundreds of thousands of people from out of the city and we'd love to be able to enhance their experience visiting Baltimore by providing them a nice place to have lunch or dinner.
So how long have you been there?
We purchased the building in January of 2018 and we opened the doors after a lot of hard work in September of 2018.
Okay. Councilman Costello?
I just want to say I've been to this fine establishment a few times and I would definitely recommend it to my colleagues on the council as an Irish Catholic, so.
So is, is that part of the finding of facts, Councilman?
No, and it's, I'll defer to my colleague Councilman Bollock as he represents the district.
I concur.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any questions or comments? Councilwoman, call of the clock?
So, hi.
Hello.
So, you, I read the, the description. So you've, so there's a bar that has been there since forever. In which address, 120, 130, what?
131, South Schroeder.
So that is like a bar?
Yes.
Now, that, they've add, so, but it's zoned residential, right?
Residential, non-conforming use, that's correct.
So it's, is it subject to phase out?
Sorry, I don't know what that means.
Phase out, like in other words, some, it's not subject to that?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
If I could clarify that, I don't, I don't believe the, the phase out had to do with liquor stores, and this is not a liquor store, it's a tavern.
Because it's a bar?
Yeah.
So it's not subject to that?
No.
So, okay, so then...
Thank you.
You, thank you. So, what, there, do we need to find a mistake that was made when this?
No.
No.
No. Tell, tell me what we have to do here.
So, um, planning to do on a...
In other words, here's a bar that has, is, is zoned residential and then I, and then we're adding in 934 West Pratt?
That's correct.
And that's zoned?
Also residential.
And so is the, the two of the ones on South Schroeder are?
That's correct.
All right, so they're all zoned residential, so we can, we can just change them?
With, the existing, the current existing tavern is grandfathered in, so it is...
Yes.
It can stay. It's the rezoning of the adjacent properties that is necessary to enlarge the, the, the current tavern to accommodate an eating area, I guess, a dining room. So you would need to find a change or miss, in the neighborhood or a mistake in the underlying zoning when it backed down the Transform process to justify the rezoning.
So, was there a mistake? I mean, was there a mistake?
We believe so, yes. And, and the, the last time that the zoning was changed, our property was not identified to change from commercial, even though it had been commercial for 160 years. So that's why we believe that there was a mistake.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And maybe Councilwoman Clark, maybe BDC can shed some light on that, what they testified. BMZA?
BMZA stands by its report recommending approval with the amendments proposed by the Planning Commission.
Okay, DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its report as no objection.
Uh, HCD?
DHCD stands by our report as no objection.
Okay, BDC?
BDC stands by its report of support for this bill with the amendments as proposed by Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Now we are on, uh, public testimony? Is that, are we good?
I would just say that the Law Department can approve it if appropriate findings are made.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. Public testimony, uh, Mike Sykes?
Michael?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. It's always a pleasure to come back and see you all. So I am Michael Syke. I'm the executive director of the Southwest Partnership. The Southwest Partnership is an organization of seven neighborhoods and six anchor institutions, responsible for overseeing the implementation of the Vision Plan for community development in those seven neighborhoods. And I would like to put on the record that in September of 2015, the Planning Commission adopted the Southwest Partnership Vision Plan and made it part of the city's master plan, which speaks directly to some of the issues that you have in moving this forward. Backyard is sort of the second or maybe even third generation of a restaurant that has been serving the citizens of Southwest for a long time, as you heard. And just as an anecdote, when my grandfather and his brother were delivering fish to Hollins Market at 4:00 in the morning, after we finished, because I, I got to ride along on the weekends with them, we would go to Patrick's, which was then the name of the establishment, and get our breakfast there. And even at that time, 129 was used by the owner as part of their establishment. So I, I think we have several issues here. One is when Transform Baltimore was put in place, there was a mistake. I think that the, the reading from the staff that was putting together Transform Baltimore and in the presentation to the Planning Commission, when they talked about the residential character of that block and that being one of the main reasons that it should stay residential, is a drastic error. It's an error in how we think about our built environment as a city, how we think about our neighborhoods. And using the zoning code to create this clean, crisp lines of separating commercial from residential is an idea that may have made sense in 1968 but no longer makes sense today, given where we are in our retail world and our, and our services. In a neighborhood like Hollins Roundhouse, Union Square, Pig Town, services to the, the BNO Museum, it's important to have amenities. It's important to have those amenities so people choose to live, work, play, and pray in a neighborhood. And so to simply say, well, you know, 50% or 60% of the properties are currently used as residential and so these should be residential, even though for the last 150 years it's been commercial, is a position that I think is out of touch with how we rebuild our cities and our neighborhoods. So the Southwest Partnership, all seven neighborhoods, all six anchor institutions, very strongly encourage the... encourage the city council to pass this bill. We think it will increase the number of public facilities in the neighborhood, which will be an asset to attracting new individuals to buy and rent in the neighborhood. It will serve the visitors to the BNO Museum so they continue to spend money in the city of Baltimore rather than going elsewhere to spend their meal money after a visit. It's certainly compatible with existing and proposed development in the area. We're about to spend almost eight million dollars redoing the public market in Hollins, and this is right down the street. It's an extension of that. And as I said before, the proposed amendment is definitely consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan because the Southwest Vision Plan was adopted by, officially adopted by the Planning Commission. So I think the council has a lot of strong reasons and rationale to move this bill forward. So I thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Councilwoman Clark has a question or statement?
Yes.
Someone else?
No, 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 I have some questions. So, we have to have a mistake here.
Pardon me?
We need a mistake.
All right.
So let, can I just...
Go ahead, you got the microphone, Council.
So, there was, there's a new owner here...
Yes.
...of this traditional place.
Patrick's.
Is it, is, is it possible that during the time of our trans-form zoning code...
Let's stick with the, it's a use, not a zoning. I'm sorry, go ahead. It's the use of...
The use never changed.
No.
Right.
No, but it's expanding, and it needs to be, the zoning needs to be changed. Therefore, there's only two things that can happen. One is that the population has changed, and I think you've made a good argument about the diversity of the, the changes that are happening around this very place. But is there a reason that an owner, is there a reason these didn't get zoned, rezoned commercial during the year and a half that we worked on creating transform zoning code? Is, was there an absence of an owner? Was there a new owner? Was there a gap, do you know, that would have caused this obvious rezoning to be part of the regular zoning code?
I, I think it was a mistake. I think it was an oversight by the staff that was putting together Transform Baltimore.
Okay.
And I think it needs to be corrected, and the way to correct that is to change the zoning.
We, to, to piggyback on a councilwoman, I got two other colleagues. There was, and I might be rude about it, we had, there was another councilperson, and it was the council's responsibility to look at some of this rezoning, working with the Planning Department. So at this time, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna start by saying how deeply I appreciate Michael's remarks here. I think that they exhibit an, a very important understanding of how we should be looking at our city and urban planning, and that is that we don't exist within a rigid framework except to the extent that we create one, and that a neighborhood is not made stronger by dividing lines between what is allowed to exist here and what is allowed to exist literally an inch over from it. And, and that it is reasonable to say that when we approach city and neighborhood and community building with this in mind, a place next door to a commercial pla, commercially-zoned property or a commercially-used property is just as reasonably used as a commercial use as it would be as perhaps the residential use that's on the other side of it. And so it's somewhat arbitrary that we decide, well, the first house on the block, the corner, has a, a commercial use, but the second one absolutely should never have a commercial use. That's silly. That's an arbitrary decision to fall on one side or the other. And I think the mistake is that we erred on the fifty percent side here in one way, and we have the opportunity to say, look, that was a mistake. This neighborhood has fluidity to its use and always has and always will because it is a neighborhood in an urban environment, and the mistake was for us to have simply erred on the fifty percent side of residential when there's clearly a commercial use on the other side of it. So we should accept that there's a mistake and that this property should be rezoned as commercial.
Very well said.
And so I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that that be accepted as the facts of the matter and that we find that as fact.
Any other comments?
I'm making a motion.
What's the motion?
I mean, I think, Councilor Costello, you have...
I just had a question. When was the master plan adopted?
Uh, I believe it was September 2015.
I would, I would argue that because of when we passed Transform Baltimore, Mr. Chairman, that, that be included in the finding of facts as well because Transform is, as you're very well aware, Mr. Chairman, was introduced back in 2011. So it's very possible that Transform did not take into consideration Southwest Partnership's plans, and would just add that to Councilman...
Yes.
Hang on, would add that to Councilman Dorsey's point of items that should be included in the finding of facts for support.
I'll second that amended motion.
Okay.
So we've got...
Okay, so...
I'm seconding the, the motion that Councilman Dorsey made as added to by Councilman Costello.
Okay, so the motion for the finding of facts by Dorsey, second by Clark. All those who favor the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have, the finding of facts passes. These, there's amendments to this? Do we have a motion? Was the...
There's an amendment that, yes, there's, er, is it, that other address?
Councilwoman?
Yeah, we have two amendments.
I know, but I have some ready to, to do.
Okay, the, uh, move the amendments.
Do we have a motion to move the amendments?
Move the two amendments. We're going to C1, and we're go, and we're adding the property around the corner.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dorsey.
Okay.
All those who favor the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have, the amendment's passed.
Move the bill as amended.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Clark.
Second, Dorsey.
Second by Dorsey. White singer votes yes. Sne?
Yes.
Sne, yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Costello.
Was it, Costello?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey, yes. Middleton is absent. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. We have seven yes with one absent. Okay, let me go back.
Thank you.
There was two other people that want to testify or jumped to gun. I apologize. Lara Summerson?
Oh, that's me.
Okay. And Michael Kavanaugh? You're good?
Are you okay?
And Piper? Could I, could I, can I take care of the hearing, Councilwoman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Piper Bucher or...
I, I'm...
Okay, thank you. So we're finished. We're seven in favor, one absent. Bill nineteen dot zero three six seven passed, will come out on December the second. This concludes the, the hearing of Bill nineteen dot zero three six seven.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Ms. Clark, thank you very much.